Your Honor.
Good morning. Welcome to the New York State Commission on Ethics and Lobbying in Government Annual Public. I am Seymour James, Chair of the Commission. Thank you for attending or watching today's hearing. I'd also like to thank the New York City Bar Association for hosting our hearing. I'd like to acknowledge my fellow Commission members who are attending today. Present in the room are Vice Chair Eva Ayers, immediate to my left, Commissioner Leonard B. Austin, going over from me on the right, Commissioner James Karas to my far right, Commissioner Claudia L. Edwards to my far left, and joining remotely is Commissioner Dolly Caraballo. Also present is Executive Director Sanford Berlin, my immediate left. In addition, I thank the members of the public who provide testimony in person and remotely. The purpose of our public hearing is to receive comments about the Commission's current operations and about potential changes in the laws as it administers, its jurisdiction, and its rules and regulations. We ask for testimony on the effectiveness of current state ethics and lobbying laws and recommendations to improve the structure, administration, communication, and enforcement of ethics and lobbying laws, regulations in New York State. We'd also like opinions on how the Commission can better administer and enforce the state's ethics and lobbying laws, hold those who serve our government, those who seek to influence it, to the highest ethical standards. Your comments will be taken into account as we develop our 2026 legislative agenda. We have also asked for public comment on preliminary proposals put forward by staff earlier this month as part of our years-long comprehensive review. We are earnestly undertaking a comprehensive review of all the laws, regulations, and the new and legacy advisory opinions that govern our work. We hope to identify ideas that will make Colick's efforts to enforce and administer those laws more effective and efficient. For those who could not join us to speak in person or virtually, we encourage them to share feedback in writing, which will be accepted through next Thursday, October 2. After today's hearing, we will carefully consider all feedback, help inform the future work of the Commission, better serve the public, our stakeholders, and the entity we regulate. This is our third public hearing, and I speak to my fellow Commissioners when I say, feedback we have received has been invaluable, read every comment, and have taken significant actions as a result. Every member of the Commission, Executive Director Berlin, and our talented staff are steadfast in holding those who serve our government and those who seek to influence it to the highest ethical standards. Equally significant, they're committed to restoring the public's trust in state government. Raising constructive feedback and new ideas from the public is part of the process to restore that trust. Thank you again for being here today to share your valuable comments. Now, I will turn it over to Executive Director Berlin, who will describe how the hearing will proceed.
Thank you, Chair James, and thank you to the New York City Bar Association for having us. Welcome to each of you attending today's hearing, whether you're here at the City Bar Association, at the Commission's offices in Albany, or New York, or participating virtually. And welcome to those of you who are watching the livestream. Today's public hearing is an opportunity for Commissioners and staff to listen to the public's assessment of our work and to hear your ideas for how we can move forward effectively and efficiently to carry out our duties and our statutory goal, fostering public trust in the integrity and purposefulness of state government and those who serve it. Each person testifying today will have 10 minutes to speak. We ask that you adhere to that time limit and respect the right of others to speak. If you wish to provide additional feedback beyond your 10 minutes, please send them in writing to publichearing@ethics.ny.gov. Once we have all written feedback, the Commission will review the comments as it considers more than 40 potential proposals staff has developed, with input received at previous public hearings to strengthen the state's ethics and lobbying laws and regulations and to make the administration and enforcement of those laws and regulations more effective and efficient. The scope of the work that has been done and the work that lies ahead for the Commission is appreciable and challenging. We're especially appreciative for your participation in today's hearing, and we are confident that you will provide us with observations, assessments, comments, and suggestions that will help guide us in our efforts moving forward. I do want to acknowledge several members, senior members of our staff who are present today, our Director of Enforcement Investigations, Brian Weinberg, Harold Quinn, our Director of Lobbying, Kavita Bott, our Deputy General Counsel, and Emily DeSantis, Chief of Staff and Director of Policy. We'll begin the testimony at this point. Each of you is provided with a speaker number, and we will be calling you forward in numerical order and by name. If you're attending here in New York City, when your name and number are called, please proceed to the microphone before us at the front of the room. And with that, we will begin. First speaker is not yet, but she will go to Speaker Two, Elena Sassauer, Director of the Center for Judicial Accountability.
Elena Sassauer. I am Elena Sassauer, Director of the nonpartisan nonprofit citizens organization Center for Judicial Accountability, Inc., CJA. Our website is www.judewatch.org, and from its left-side panel, "Testimony," you can find a link for my written testimony entitled "A Tale of Six Complaints and Now Seven," and to the open-and-shut prima facie evidence substantiating it. At your last year's November 13, 2024, second annual hearing, my written testimony was entitled "A Tale of Four Complaints and Now Five." It summarized my written testimony at your March 29, 2023 first annual hearing, as well as the four complaints CJA had by then filed with you. The fifth complaint was that written testimony itself, and it was against you, your Executive Director, your Legal Counsel, and other high-ranking staff. Thereafter, CJA filed a February 27, 2025 complaint, our sixth complaint. CJA's now seventh complaint is this written testimony, which is a complaint also against you, your Executive Director, General Counsel, and other high-ranking staff. Here it is with a written complaint, written and signed complaint form. This seventh complaint is CJA's third complaint against you, your Executive Director, your General Counsel, and other high-ranking staff. The first, which I warned you of by my March 29, 2023 written testimony for your first annual hearing, was CJA's October 2, 2023 complaint, as to which I stated in testifying last year that it was dispositive of the situation then, now, and of what must happen going forward, including with respect to the lawsuits, CJA against Jacob et al. and Cuomo against Colick, which were then both at the Court of Appeals, and that my recommendation in closing was that you, quote, "do your duty by confronting with findings of facts and conclusions of law its specific and credible evidence of your conflict of interest-driven substantial neglect of duty and misconduct in office and its continuation to the present as herein summarized." What findings of fact and conclusions of law did you make with respect to my last year's testimony? And what number did you assign to the complaint? And what is its status? According to the November 7, 2024 email of your Public Information Officer, CJA's January 29, 2024 complaint was assigned the number 24-141. There are 28 subsequent numbers listed on your chart of, quote, "2024 enforcement activities", unquote, in your annual report for 2024. None reflect a complaint against you. So where is it? The October 2, 2023 complaint answers your two, quote, "two overarching questions" for this hearing that you identified with respect to your proposals. They are: Is New York State Ethics and Lobbying Regulation System effective? And what changes, if any, should be considered? So the answer to the first question, insofar as ethics, regulation, enforcement, and that pertains to complaints, you are totally sham, ineffective, and that is reflected in my testimony, now my third testimony at your annual hearing, all the complaints previously filed. What changes, if any, should be considered? Well, the problem is not existing regulations, rules, statutes, procedures. The problem is you're not following them knowingly, deliberately, willfully because of your multitudinous conflicts of interest, none of which you have ever disclosed and addressed accordingly. So, lastly, this complaint, this testimony here, and my written testimony, is, uh, is, uh, recites. Bye. I'm back. 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 I'm causing vast irreparable injury to the people of enabled public officers whose conflict of interest-driven corruption would the subject of CJA's complaints to you to run for higher office, offices. Topping the list in 2025 are Queens New York State Assemblyman Zola Mamadani, running to be New York City Mayor, and Manhattan New York State Senator Brad Hoyleman Siegel, running to be Manhattan Borough President, with their candidacies boosted by endorsements from so many other public officers whose conflict of interest-driven corruption is part of the same complaints, such as Governor Hochul, temporary Senate President Stuart Cousins, and Assembly Speaker Carl Peasty, in addition to, of course, A.G. James. These complaints were furnished with you with specific and credible evidence of violations of Public Officers' Law 74 prescribing conflicts of interest, which pursuant to executive law 9410D and F are the predicate for investigation, signified by 15-day written notice to parties within your jurisdiction. I therefore file this testimony as now a seventh complaint specifically against Mamadani and Hoyleman Siegel, further substantiating same by the emails I sent them this past March, particularizing their conflict of interest-driven corruption in office.
Could you please conclude? All right, Ms. Sassauer, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sassauer.
Our next speaker is Blair Horner, Executive Director of the New York Public Interest Research Group. Mr. Horner?
Yeah.
Yes, for those who are observing remotely, we're just going to take a couple of minutes to make sure that our AV system is properly recording. Micro and podium. All right, thank you again, Blair Horner, Executive Director of Nyberg.
Good morning. As you know, my name is Blair Horner, and we submitted written testimony. I dropped it off. So you can see full. So I'm just going to highlight a few things, and I didn't even use up 10 minutes of the time. So that will work. The, I mean, generally speaking, the comments that we have are supportive of the proposals, many of the proposals that you raised. We don't really focus as much on sort of the enforcement side of your powers and proposals. We're mainly focused on the areas of ethics and lobbying. On the ethics filings, the filings in particular, I've looked at these things every year now for too many years. It would be great to focus, advance proposals to reform. The filings, they're extremely difficult to follow, they're repetitive, and often unreadable. So the suggestion that people file electronically, we wholeheartedly support. Also, wholeheartedly support the recommendation that candidates for office disclosure forms possibly disclose. On the ethics filing side, we like those proposals, and the suggestions to deal with campaign fundraising activities of lobbyists, we support restrictions there. As you may know, Albany has a legislative session that runs from the beginning of January to the, probably, the middle of June, and during that time, there can be anywhere from 175 to 200 campaign fundraisers that occur at the state capitol, which, just doing the math, note, you can see that there's multiple fundraisers every night. 60, roughly 60 days lawmakers are in session, roughly 40 nights, roughly 175 to 200 campaigns. Were they having them for in Albany? They're not expecting anyone from Brooklyn to show up. They're doing it for the lobbyists to deliver the campaign contributions to elected officials. So during the day lobbyists are seeking to curry favor, at night they're helping to fund the campaign efforts of incumbents. That is an inherent conflict. And so there are states that place, roughly half the states in the country, have some sort of restriction on lobbyist involvement in campaign fundraisers. We recommend that you look at those. The National Conference of State Legislatures keeps track. Probably the more comprehensive ones are ones that apply beyond just the legislative session, because we all know in the era of modern technology, pledging to make a campaign contribution is once, is effectively the same thing as doing it at that same time. There are, of course, issues, constitutional issues, about the involvement of lobbyists exercising their free speech rights. We certainly don't seem, we don't want to prohibit that. There are states that basically have lower specific limits for lobbyists, and they restrict them time of, uh, time of the, of the contribution, so to outside the session. There's usually some sort of combination of restrict, lower restrictions on campaign contributions coupled with time when you can move. Connected to that, in terms of your enforcement, we would recommend that you recommend that the legislature adopt campaign finance disclosure requirements that require an employer's name of the donor. New York City has that, federal government has that, New York State does not. I don't know how else you would keep track of it. If Blair Horner writes down his Nyberg address, you'll be able to find out that it's Blair Horner making the donation. By the way, I don't. But if I put down my home address, how would you know? And so that is one of the issues. Secondly, in terms of the lobbying disclosures you recommend in your testimonials, disclosing whether or not an organization or lobbyist supports or opposes the bill, that makes perfect sense, we support that. I think it would be a relatively easy thing to do. You make other recommendations which we're not supportive of, which require additional disclosures by the lobbyists, and here's mine. There's already a problem with small entities being involved in their constitutional right to petition the government because the regulatory system that's been created in New York is designed really for the contract lobbyists, person who does keep track of every minute, who does keep track of every single meeting. You're a small not-for-profit, that may be a hard thing to do. It's ineffective, and they're afraid, because if they mess up, there are big penalties. So the, the, I think you should consider, when you're developing disclosure requirements, consider that there are small fry clients and entities that are trying to express themselves to state government, and you don't want to create a system that is so onerous that they can't participate. One recommendation's been legislation to raise the floor beyond which people have to disclose. Right now, it's $5,000. It's been $5,000 for a long time. We think you could update that. Legislation increases to $10,000, that would be one. One recommendation that is not in your list that I wanted to draw your attention to, talked about it last year, which is the requirement that if you're seeking to influence gubernatorial appointees, you do not have to disclose that advocacy. So let me give you an example, and I think I used this last year, but I can't remember. If you are seeking to influence utility rates before the Public Service Commission, that's considered lobbying. If you're seeking to influence who's on the Public Service Commission that sets the rates, that's not lobbying. On the ball. Now, that doesn't make any sense, and we think you should recommend it. I think the state senate has passed a bill to do that. It makes perfect sense. As I say it to you, I'm sure you think to yourself, why don't we do that? And you're right. And it's not just about appointments. If you're seeking to influence appointments to the Board of Regents, it is considered lobbying, because that, those appointments are done through a joint resolution of both houses. Resolutions are covered. Gubernatorial appointments confirmed by the senate are not. So we strongly recommend that you advance that, because that would help maybe to close that, maybe, hole in the law. I promise that I would keep it under 10 minutes. I'm done. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Foss, Senior Policy Advisor for Reinvent Albany. Ms. Foss.
Hi, good morning. I'm going to rub this mic down. My name is Rachel Foss. I'm the Senior Policy Advisor for Reinvent Albany. We advocate for a transparent and accountable New York government. First, thank you for holding the hearing and conducting the comprehensive review that is required by the 2022 Ethics Commission Reform Act. We appreciate you regularly asking New Yorkers what would make them more confident that their state government is working for the broader public good and is not warped by special interests, cronyism, and corruption. Our words, not yours, of course. Starting with the positive, Reinvent Albany especially supports your proposal to improve technology systems and update the lobbying and financial disclosure platforms. These improvements are a win-win for both those having to file the statements and the Colick staff overseeing compliance with lobbying and ethics. We look forward to providing specific recommendations in these areas as staff further develop the upgrades. We are glad you put the most important question to the public first. Is New York State's ethics and lobbying regulation system effective? Unfortunately, our answer to resounding no. This is not Colick's fault. The problem here is the governor and legislature have not been willing to pass laws that illuminate the obvious conflicts of interest that occur when people attempting to influence state government contribute to political campaigns of elected officials. I think my, the previous speaker outlined some of those issues. I'll echo support for that in a moment. Until this changes, the public is right to question whether Albany is putting their needs first or the desires of special interests. I know you have 43 proposals. We did put our position on all of them in a chart that I sent the staff for you to look at. Hopefully, it's helpful to you. I'm going to highlight a few, our top five, if we had to pick five of them. Reporting by lobbyists of campaign contributions. Again, this is something we strongly support, and it's required in New York City currently. Number two, reporting of the position on lobbying, whether the action is taken in support or opposition to legislation or a governmental action. Three, as I mentioned, overhauling the technology systems. Four, overhauling the financial disclosure questions and form. This simply should not be in state law, but subject to Colick rulemaking. And five, streamlining and tightening investigation and enforcement processes and timelines. We think this is crucial to building confidence and making sure that enforcement matters are handled swiftly, and whatever Colick can do administratively here, it should. I'm going to get into a couple of the lobbying proposals a little bit more specifically that I have not spoken to yet. We also strongly support restricting campaign donations from lobbyists, as Blair mentioned. I would encourage you to look at the New York City model here, where donations are limited rather than restricted altogether. There are some constitutional issues here that you're likely aware of, so proposals around this have to be drafted pretty carefully. We do support lobbyists providing additional details on lobbying activity, time spent. I understand the point of view from, from Blair about the effort it takes, you know, other than raising the threshold to 10,000 for small filers, there's also requiring them to only file semi-annually. There's different ways to do this, so it's less onerous for the smaller groups, so we do support that threshold change as well. And we also support requiring reporting of lobbying on And we also support requiring reporting of lobbying on nominations. This is a pretty common sense loophole, or it's a common sense reform, and it's a pretty glaring loophole in our lobbying laws. On the financial disclosure pieces, we do agree lawmakers should file FDS forms directly with Colig. We support guidelines to make it more clear about which, how the designation of policymakers, that was a proposal you also had. I note that the Conflicts of Interest Board actually publishes the list of policymakers, that's something that you could look at as well. And regarding additional enforcement recommendations, when filers fail to comply, we support additional penalties in that area. On ethics and guidance, we support clarifying outside activity regulations, we support reviewing travel approvals. I think in particular, given scandals in New York City with the Adams administration, it's important to take another look at the travel payments. Rather than clarifying the regulations, we think a ban actually would be a far more effective thing here, there should be no reason for third parties to be paying for state government travel. On the gift regulations, you questioned whether raising, raising the threshold to $25 for gifts makes sense. We would oppose that simply because we don't see the reason to have a different threshold in New York City and New York State. New York City's is $50, New York State's is 15. We think 50 is too high. If anything, there should be somewhat of an alignment here, so it's less confusing for everyone involved. And we also oppose extending advice and guidance confidentiality beyond the agency heads to employees. This is somewhat inconsistent with Colig's advisory opinion on confidentiality of guidance where waivers are issued. We just ask you to take a look, because it seems a bit inconsistent with some of your prior work in this area. I'm probably running short on my time, oh, four minutes, okay, I'll keep going. But I'll try to end a little early, too. On investigations and enforcement, I think in concept, we support enacting uniform rules of discovery and evidentiary procedures. There's a couple of things that we'd suggest you do as well. Anything you can do administratively, we think's important. Again, if you don't have to do legislative fixes, that's far better for, for everyone involved. We think that there should be training for hearing officers regarding sexual harassment cases. And on the hearing officer process, we'd also suggest uniform standards of proof, to make sure that as you're ramping up this hearing officer process, that everything is as standard and clear as possible. In terms of the commission imposing nine financial penalties, we do support this in concept, but having listened to the Court of Appeals hearing on the Cuomo v. Colig lawsuit, I'm not sure how much you can do there, because of some of the constitutional concerns about separation of powers. If Colig is able to issue, impose discipline, that might trigger some constitutional questions. And we'd also like to hear more from the commission about emergent relief. This is somewhat of a, seems like somewhat of a novel concept in the ethics realm, so we just like some examples of when that might be helpful for you, before we further comment on that proposal. I think on other pieces, there was a, one proposal about disclosure of records, and changing the rules around what you can comment on, or what records you can release that are under current investigations. We'd suggest, rather than delineating what records can be released and what records cannot be released, that you simply apply the Freedom of Information Law to yourselves, and anytime there's a difference between the executive law, you simply, you know, take out those references, because many other agencies across the state do investigations, do enforcement, and there are standard rules, and we believe in principle that the commission should be subject to the exact same rules as other agencies when it comes to enforcement matters. Again, thank you for your time, and appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker in Albany is Mr. Jim McCabe, representing the Jewish Voice for Peace.
Good morning, just a quick mic check, can you hear me okay?
You can.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jim McCabe, and I am here on behalf of Break the Bonds New York State, a campaign of community, faith, and labor groups, with thousands of supporters across the state, from Buffalo to Brooklyn. We are united by one concern, that public trust is being undermined by Controller Thomas Denapoli's investment of pension funds in Israel bonds. The Controller's unusually close relationship with the Development Corporation of Israel, the exclusive underwriter of Israel bonds in the U.S., raises questions about openness, accountability, and compliance with New York's ethic laws. This commission exists to strengthen public trust in government by ensuring compliance with ethics and lobbying laws. That mission goes to the heart of my testimony. I will focus on three provisions of the Public Officers' Law, Section 74 Code of Ethics. Section 743c, no officer or employee of a state agency, member of the legislature, or legislative employee should disclose confidential information acquired by him in the course of his official duties, nor use such information to further his personal interests. Section 743f, an officer or employee of a state agency, member of the legislature, or legislative employee should not by his conduct give reasonable basis for the impression that any person can improperly influence him or unduly enjoy his favor in the performance of his official duties, or that he is affected by the kinship, rank, position, or influence of any party or person. Section 743h, an officer or employee of a state agency, member of the legislature, or legislative employee should endeavor to pursue a course of conduct which will not raise suspicion among the public that he is likely to be engaged in acts that are in violation of his trust. I will begin by addressing the improper disclosure of confidential information. Since August 2024, the Break the Bonds New York State campaign has filed four FOIL requests. The request sought basic information about the New York State Common Retirement Fund's investments in Israel bonds. The retirement fund is managed by Controller Denapoli, who serves as the sole decision-maker on all investment decisions. All four requests were denied with three justifications. First, the fund is not subject to FOIL. Second, the records are inter-agency or intra-agency communications. And third, the records qualify as trade secrets. Despite this, Controller Denapoli disclosed the same information publicly, but not to the pensioners he serves, who requested this information through FOIL. On April 2nd, 2024, Denapoli appeared at an economic briefing event organized by Israel Bonds alongside Yali Rothenberg, the Israeli Ministry of Finance's accountant general. Two days later, Israel Bonds posted a video of the event on Instagram, where Controller Denapoli told the attendees, quote, "We've done well over 100 million since October 7th, and we welcome that opportunity, just keep letting us know what more we can do to support Israel Bonds," end quote. This is a contradiction, denying information to New York pensioners while promoting it at an Israel bond event to bond underwriters. If the information is truly confidential, it should not be broadcast for political gain. If it is not confidential, it should be shared with the public, especially pensioners. Selective disclosure violates both Section 743c and public trust. Next, I will address improper influence and undue favor. In February 2024, Controller Denapoli made his sixth trip to Israel as Controller. The trip was organized and funded by the Jewish Community Relations Council of New York. The JCRC, which organizes or coordinates over sixty Jewish organizations in New York City, receives institutional donations directly from Israel Bonds. During the trip, Denapoli toured Gaza border areas, described himself as, quote, "A New Yorker with a long association with the Jewish people and the state of Israel," quote, and defended, defended expanded bond purchases as, quote, "good business sense." By participating in a trip organized and paid for by an organization that receives institutional donations and is closely and publicly aligned with Israel Bonds, while simultaneously promoting his office's ongoing investments in Israel Bonds, Controller Denapoli engaged in a foreign policy function far outside his statutory mandate as a fiduciary to millions of pensioners and public employees. Not only did he seek to align the state's financial resources with the interests of a foreign government, but more gravely, he has given the public reasonable basis to believe that his judgment is subject to improper influence. This represents a serious violation of his ethical obligation under Section 743f, to avoid any impression that his official duties can be swayed by outside groups. At minimum, it undermines public trust in the independence of the Controller's office and the integrity of the state's investment decisions. Lastly, I will address the suspicion of violating public trust. Since October 7th, 2023, Israel's credit rating has been downgraded by the Big Three credit rating agencies, twice by Moody's and S&amp;P, and once by Fitch. According to Moody's, Israel's credit rating now sits at BAA1, the lowest in its history, putting Israel Bonds just three notches above junk. All three agencies have assigned a negative outlook indicating that more downgrades are possible. Meanwhile, Israel faces mounting legal and political risks. Multiple independent U.N. bodies, international human rights groups, and the International Association of Genocide Scholars have all concluded that Israel is committing acts of genocide in Gaza. The International Court of Justice is currently hearing a genocide case against the state of Israel, and the International Criminal Court has indicted Israel's prime minister and the former defense minister for war crimes. In September 2025, Prime Minister Netanyahu himself warned that Israel may have to deal with an, quote, "autarkic economy" in the near future due to isolation and sanctions. In the face of these unprecedented risks, the Controller has not shown the heightened due diligence that any fiduciary would be expected to exercise. Instead, since October 2023, Controller Denapoli has added at least 100 million in new Israel bonds, bringing the fund's total to 352.7 million as of March 31st, 2024. Based on the latest publicly available data, 75% of all foreign sovereign bonds in the fund are concentrated in Israel bonds, making the New York State Common Retirement Fund one of the largest holders in the U.S. Even more troubling, 90% of these holdings, 317.5 million, are a specific type of bond issued by the Development Corporation of Israel through private placements, which happens behind closed doors, away from the transparency and economic disciplines of open markets. These bonds have no transparent pricing, which prevents the public from calculating yield. Additionally, they have no secondary market, so they can't be sold for cash if Israel's credit rating further declines, which is exactly what happened over the past two years. This means that the Controller has voluntarily tied the fund's hands to opaque high-risk debt instruments during a time when economic conditions in Israel are the worst in decades. The Controller's decision violates Section 743h by raising obvious suspicion that decisions are being driven by political considerations, not fiduciary prudence. That suspicion itself violates the ethical duty to maintain public trust. Let me now conclude. Controller Denapoli's conduct selectively disclosing information, creating the impression of outside influence, and committing pension funds to opaque high-risk securities raises serious concerns under multiple provisions of Public Officers' Law, Section 74 Code of Ethics. As pensioners and citizens, we are deeply troubled that the state's chief fiduciary may be violating both the letter and spirit of the Code of Ethics. We urge this commission to give our testimony full consideration and to exercise its mandate to uphold transparency, accountability, and ethical conduct in government. At a time when democracy is threatened not only by autocratic tendencies but also by political favoritism and the erosion of ethical standards, we call upon this commission to act in a way that addresses the concerns of New Yorkers and restores confidence in the integrity of our state institutions.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. We have our first speaker in Albany, is she present yet? Not present. All right, then we'll go to Ben Weinberg of Citizens Union.
Commissioners, yeah? Yeah, I think, yeah, okay. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Ben Weinberg, I'm the Policy Director at Citizens Union. I also hope not to take ten minutes, but I do appreciate giving us ten minutes, which is a rare occasion in public hearings. Before beginning my remark, I actually, do you want to take a moment to, to note the passing of colleague Commissioner Michael Cordos? He was a truly devoted public servant and a remarkable person who had always the public's interested heart before joining Colig. He was a longtime board member for Citizens Union, I appreciate his time and advice. So I thought it's worth mentioning that before I begin my remarks. And on to today's hearing. I just want to begin by acknowledging the sheer amount of work that went into producing this comprehensive review document before us. The framing of the questions and the thoughtful presentation of potential solutions reflects the, a serious task and a seriousness of purpose, and a periodic review process like this, that's both open to the public and is meant to explore weaknesses and remedies should be replicated in many other areas of state government. Because of the quality of this work and the caliber of this commission, and especially the backing of legislative leaders and the executive chamber, you have a rare opportunity here, not only to study these issues, but also to be truly heard by the policymakers that could make them into reality. So besides the policy discussion, which I'll get to in a moment, our main message to you here today is to seize that rare opportunity and to recommend those proposals that you may think are not immediately feasible under current political circumstances, but you do believe that are, that are worthy and important. Because your endorsement of those proposals, even if they are ambitious and would not be coming into effect anytime, do, soon do help set the stage for progress in the near and long-term future. So I'll, I'll just touch on a few issues, and I think some of them were covered by the speakers before, and I'll, I'll focus on lobbying and campaign contributions that were mentioned here, and I think that several speakers here mentioned that because of the importance of this issue. If the goal is to, if our goal here and the commission's goal to strengthen public transparency around who is trying to influence government actions and how lobbying, we cannot ignore the central role that campaign contributions play in the efforts to influence government actions. Now, there are several ways to address this, and one of them is donation limits. The commission asks whether to prohibit or restrict campaign donations from lobbyists and clients. As was mentioned earlier here, a full prohibition on donations may be difficult to sustain legally, but New York City's model, which imposes lower contribution limits on registered lobbyists, is an effective one. And lower contribution limits reduce both the perception and the reality that access can be purchased. And we see in the jurisdictions where they have been implemented, it's not like the lobbying industry has ceased to exist. Lobbyists still work effectively with lower contribution limits, but the electoral system does turn cleaner, and the lobbying industry does turn cleaner. Of course, there are, to ensure that government decisions are not unduly influenced by campaign contribution, often lower donation limits are also applied to people doing business with the state or seeking, or seeking contracts with the state, but I am aware this is not under the purview of, of the commission. You also asked in your report whether these limits should be applied broadly to all registered lobbyists, or just narrowly tie to the lobbyist that has specifically targeted the, an official or plans to target an official, so the donation to that official. We believe it should apply broadly, and that is because lobbying priorities shift all the time, targets, lobbying targets shift all the time. It would be quite difficult to connect these two together. In addition, if the boundaries for applying a lobbying limit or lobbying regulation are too narrow, they risk being easily circumvented. Now, what a clear blanket rule would help, it would also benefit lobbyists. It basically removes the expectation from all parties, lobbyists and elected officials, that campaign money should exchange hands, and it just focuses the act of lobbying in what it's supposed to be, informing, persuading, petitioning, not trading in, not trading between the two sides. A note on fundraising limits, Blair mentioned this earlier, you know, often You know, often the greater concern is actually not direct donations, but the fundraisers that lobbyists organize and the fundraising that they undertake on behalf of candidates. This is especially true for large lobbying firms. You know, they can either organize fundraisers or they directly collect funds from others. So we recommend clarifying on any regulation or proposals that you put forward that applies to fundraising activities as well and not only direct donations. On disclosure, disclosure of donation or campaign services. So the Commission asked whether disclosures in this area are also warranted, and we do believe so. We reiterate our recommendation from, I believe, last year that lobbyists be required to disclose their fundraising or their campaign consulting activities in their lobbying reports. This should cover services given to campaigns for state offices, but also services provided for public servants who themselves are running for another office. And that could be another office, legislative statewide or another office overall, because the same kind of give and take happens with that public servant. Now, Blair mentioned earlier the risk in placing orness reporting on small lobbyist client. And I understand that, and I actually agree that if such a disclosure is applied, it can have a higher limit, since what we are targeting here is really the larger lobbying firms and larger lobbyists that employ their dual, we call it dual service firms. They employ both lobbying services and campaign services. Now, New York City already has that reporting. I should say, compliance and enforcement there remains inconsistent. But those disclosures do allow the public, the media, and civic watchdogs like us to shine a light on lobbying activities that, what it basically does, it allows us to show that there's a lobbying activity, sorry, that there's a campaign fundraising, campaign services, and the quarter after, we see a lobbying activity, right? So that allows us to connect these two sides. And we do this analysis through the inner city and through the campaign lobbying reporting there. There's another way to address that nexus between lobbying and campaigns. And that is not through the, sorry, not through the donation side, as we just discussed, but through the lobbying side, right? And that is placing cooling off periods for these campaign consultants turned lobbyists. So we think we should consider recommending a cooling off period on lobbying elected official whose campaign one just worked on. Basically, what that would mean is that lobbyists that provide political consulting services or that manage a campaign or that fundraise for, manage the fundraisers for a campaign, and then what we see is that they immediately go to lobby that same candidate that just assumed office on behalf of their clients, right? So that basically turns the political relationship into a financial gains. And we know that millions of dollars are spent on that, on such dual-purpose firms, as I mentioned earlier. The city council is considering now a bill that would prohibit certain persons and organizations who provided paid political advice for candidates or fundraised for candidates from lobbying those candidates for one year after they were elected to city office. Other jurisdictions address that. So San Francisco, for example, forbids campaign consultants and their companies to lobby elected officials who are current lobbying clients in the five-year prior, oh, sorry, or were lobbying clients in the five-year prior. Some states deal with that through the campaign side, so they restrict lobbying from being campaign managers or treasurers. Alaska, Maryland are a couple of approaches. Lastly, I will, just moving on to another subject, not lobbying, is, so I think your first chapter asks about whether it is time to reassess some rules on post-employment and conflicts of interest. One note we would mention, we also recommend, we recommend that in New York City as well, introducing policies that deal with what's called a revolving door in. And not necessarily, so post-employment restrictions deals with the revolving door out, meaning someone finishes their time in government and should not go to work on. Wow, wow, okay, well, all right.
Do you want to finish up?
Yeah, we will submit our written testimony. I'll just reiterate support for a few other quickly things. Clarify sexual harassment as a violation of Code of Ethics. Require electronic financial disclosures, as one mentioned here, and requiring lobbying for state confirmed offices to be logged. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us? Thank you. I do want to acknowledge several staff members from our agency who were present today. Jason Spates, Taylor Smith, and in Albany, Jean Vady. I believe we're finished then with the testimony.
No more testimony? On behalf of the Commission, I thank each of our speakers for providing us with constructive comments today. We appreciate all our commenters for taking the time to share their thoughts. Public feedback is paramount to effective government. We will consider these comments as we continue our comprehensive review, formulate our legislative agenda. I remind you that we will accept additional written comments through October 2nd. Thank you again for joining us in this public hearing.
I just wanted, I neglected to mention that Michael Sander, Director of Ethics, has been present throughout. My apologies, Michael. But he's been with us from the beginning.
Thank you for being here, Mike.